Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to this Joplin Schools Board of Education meeting. Ms. Waldo, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roll Call Senator.
Here.
And Ms. Sticklet.
Here.
Mr. Steele.
Here.
Ms. Sharp.
Present.
Mr. Landis.
Present.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Thank you.
I would like to invite Mr. Caleb Cook to come forward, please. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Dr. Huff, District Showcase.
All right, we have some students here from Soaring Heights Elementary School that are really excited about their new building. And Ms. Adams is here to present her students from Soaring Heights.
Yes, I am. I'm going to ask if they would just come forward and stand next to me real quick.
Looks like you brought the whole group.
It looks like it. We've got quite a few characters here, and you're going to see their faces here again in just a moment. I'd like to take just a minute while I have a captive audience to tell you all how incredible the last two and a half years have been. From a personal perspective, I feel very fortunate, extremely lucky, to have been a part of such a tremendous experience. From the very beginning of discussions about what we wanted for our students to walking into that building on the first day and seeing the faces of the kids that we had thought about so much over the past two and a half years has been nothing short of amazing for me. So, from a personal perspective, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to be a part of that. Not an experience that many principals ever, ever get to have, and definitely will be something that will last in my memory and be a high point in my career. I've been fortunate to work for the Joplin School District for 20 years and hope to be here for many, many more years to come, and I appreciate that. And a lot of that is because of the faith that is put in me by you and the faces of these young people right here standing next to me. They are an amazing group of students. We have had a tremendous start, and I couldn't be more blessed each and every day to have over 300 students look at me and tell me what a great building we have. They thank me every day for the building, and I say, "You're welcome." Because it was all me. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the phenomenal staff, and many of them are standing back here behind me, and they're here tonight because they are proud, proud to work for the Joplin School District and proud of our new building and the amazing things that we've had happen over the last two and a half years. So, I certainly couldn't have done it without them. They have been more than supportive and gone above and beyond to get that building ready. Without further ado, we have a little video that we would like to show you to let you know just what we think of this new building. So, I'll let them go ahead and start that up for us. (Music) (Laughter) 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 (Music) They are scared to dance in the halls, aren't they? You guys have eagle hoes, eagle boppers, and everything else. It's amazing with a new building and the design of the new building comes just a whole new concept of what's appropriate and not appropriate in the hallways. And I think dancing in the hallways was pretty appropriate at that point. A good dance break every now and then doesn't hurt anybody. You might have noticed our instigator, I guess, right here. She happens to be the daughter of one of our employees, Zach Holden. Not shy.
She's a Buckeye.
Not a little shy. So, we, again, we can't tell you how much we love our new building, and you might have noticed a couple of different things going on. We had one little girl who found her older brother, and that's the little girl that was hugging the kid in the outdoor classroom. Yeah, so he's trying to get away because his little sister had found him. And then our "Feels Like Happiness" little fella there was toward the end in a yellow t-shirt. He's the one that, when asked, "Does it feel like school?", he said, "Nope, it feels like happiness." And that has become our theme and our mantra here lately is, "It just feels like happiness", and that was an appropriate song for us. So, we're very happy, very, very happy. Is some of your design team here? You know, I don't think...oh, Mrs. Olds is here. She served on the design team, and then Ms. Clyburn also served on the design team. My parent representative was going to come, but she has a sick child, so... Well, tell them thank you. Yeah, I will definitely do that. They did a phenomenal job. Okay. Are you guys ready? Okay. Want to start? Okay. Let's go. We have some gifts to distribute to you all for Board Appreciation Month, and we can't give you enough for all that you do for us every day. All right. This is this. You don't get paid much, but there's a lot of love in those bags. That's even better. That's even better. We did get pork tenderloin from Franklin, that Culinary Arts Program tonight, and it was delicious.
That was wonderful.
Thanks to the Culinary Arts Program.
She's trying to get your attention. She can't move the bag, but...
Well, is that one of your favorite songs? Pharaoh from Daven, huh? Just one.
That's one of those songs on a good sleep night.
Did you sing that? No, I can't believe it. It's better than "What's a Fox Say".
That's good.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Holden.
No, you said it was for you.
Yeah, okay. We're going to leave it at this. I think you know it's for you, right?
I guess so.
Teresa, is this video on YouTube also?
It's not yet, but we're going to upload it to YouTube.
So, when you do, I can put it on my Facebook page?
Yeah.
And show it to all my friends that live outside of the area, how happy you guys are?
Oh.
How talented you are?
I'll give it to you back in the direct line.
Check it out for snacks. No, you can't put them. You won't have room.
I'm going to do it in a second.
Did you look in it? No, I'm good. Geez, buddy, you didn't look in it? It's going to go. Nice to meet you.
You're missing that.
Thank you, uncle. How are you, buddy? Good. You want to look in? I like it.
She's here too?
You sure?
You like it?
Yeah.
This is, uh, if you're a special person.
Jeff, you're waiting for a meeting. We're busy.
That takes up too much room.
You're out there. In case, because you're walking. You're doing okay. Left, you're too friendly.
(Laughter). What? Oh, that's cool. So, this one you'll get. Kathy Minogue, no.
Oh.
There you go. They went down to Stella on Saturday for Eagle Festival Day. Got that right for you. Okay, thanks. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
Thanks all the schools. Appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Yay. Awesome, awesome.
Is that all for District Showcase?
That's all we have for District Showcase.
All right, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Say it.
Mr. Steele, Mr. Landis, any discussion?
Can we pull out anything of the consent agenda?
Ms. Sharp, you can pull whatever you'd like to off this consent agenda.
Okay, is that appropriate now or when we do something else?
Nope, that's right. Now it's fine.
Appropriate now, okay. On the item 11, bid package B and C.
B and C.
On item 11, please.
And you just want to move that to regular agenda?
Yes, please.
Move that under, note that as item three under regular agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. So, we're going to skip down to the Board Presidency Report, and I have some things that I, some folks that I'd like to recognize this evening, and I believe they're all here. I think I've seen them. Uh, let's see.
Maybe make some, you announce names, and we'll see who's here.
Yep. All right, so we're going to do some staff recognition, and so the first person I'd like to recognize would be the head soccer coach, Ed Miller. I don't believe Ed is here, though. I haven't seen him. And so, Ed is a physical education teacher at Joplin High School, and he earned the 2013 Soccer Coach of the Year honor for OSAR Conference. And he was also recently named a District Coach of the Year for Class III in District 12. And Mr. Miller has led the boys' soccer team to the conference championship for three straight years, as well as the district championship in 2004 and 2013. And he coaches both the girls' and the boys' soccer teams and is in his 13th year with the Joplin School District. So, please give that to Ed. I hope I get this name right, please. Deanna Anderson? Please. I'm going to read this, and then we'll do the presentation. Ms. Anderson is an engineering and graphics constructor at Franklin Technical Center and has been asked to serve on a national task force with Skill USA. Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry workers working together to ensure America has a skilled workforce. Skills USA serves more than 300,000 students and instructors annually, and the organization has 13,000 school chapters and 54 state and territorial associations. And Deanna will be going to Washington, DC to help write national curriculum for this organization, and this is her 18th year with Franklin Technology Center. That's fan brass. Part of the high school design team.
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
She'll represent us well.
Yes, she will.
Next, we have Mr. Kirk Harriman. And Kirk's a physical education teacher at Joplin High School and earned the 2013 Softball Coach of the Year honor for the OSAR Conference. Kirk returned to coaching softball in 2013 and promptly led the team to an undefeated OSAR Conference championship, as well as second place in districts. And in his tenure as softball coach, his teams have won nine out of 11 conference championships. And Mr. Harriman has been employed with Joplin School since 1997 and also serves as the head baseball coach, correct?
Correct.
Awesome. (Applause).
Good job, Kirk.
All right, next we have Mr. Jeff Starkweather, Joplin Schools Athletic Director. Jeff Starkweather was recently named the MI AAA Southwest District Athletic Director of the Year. He was recognized for his hard work and dedication to the students and athletes of Joplin High School. Mr. Starkweather has been Athletic Director since 2006, and he will be recognized at the MI AAA Conference banquet in April. He is also a contender for the Missouri Athletic Director of the Year Award, and Jeff joined Joplin Schools in 1989 and has served as Athletic Director since 2006 and is a former Parkwood High School graduate.
(Laughter). You've got to do what you've got to do.
That's right, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff. Good job, Jeff.
Thank you.
Me or him? That Jeff. Oh, you too.
I can say we went to high school together, but he's a lot older than me.
That's why there was a Parkwood.
That's why you've got the great hair, you see.
All right, next we have Dr. Angie Besendorfer and Joplin Schools Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Angie Besendorfer was presented the 2013 Outstanding Teacher Education Alumnus Award on behalf of the Executive Council of the Department of Teacher Education at Missouri Southern State University. That's a long sentence. The council chose Dr. Besendorfer for her contributions to education. Dr. Besendorfer graduated from Missouri Southern in 1990 with a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education with an emphasis in early childhood, and the award is given annually, and a brass plate with the honoree's name is placed on a plaque displayed in Taylor Hall at MSSU. You've got it too, Peter. Dr. Besendorfer joins Bonnie Turner, media specialist at East Middle School, on the plaque. Bonnie was the 2012 recipient. Dr. Besendorfer was also recently recognized as a top 100 nominee for the first-ever John C. Maxwell Leadership Award, and she was chosen among thousands of nominations for exemplary leadership. John C. Maxwell is an internationally renowned leadership expert, coach, and author who has sold over 21 million books. And Dr. Besendorfer has been the Assistant Superintendent at Joplin School since 2007. And we are honored to give you this award and to tell you that we'll miss you.
This is our last board meeting.
Yes, it is. So, this is, Joplin Schools Board of Education recognizes Dr. Angie Besendorfer in appreciation of your dedication, excellence, and commitment to the children of Joplin.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
That's awesome. Wow.
Would you like to say a few words?
I don't think I should, right? (Laughter).
During the meeting, you just sneak them in whenever you get a chance.
One of the things I'll say, she's sitting down, you know, Angie's had, played a huge role in the design of the new schools and led multiple design teams. Angie and I worked closely together for six years, and she's done fantastic work throughout, and, you know, her legacy's going to live on in those new buildings. And tonight, you'll be looking at this document, which, you know, this is kind of segueing into the superintendent's report, and I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but you're going to be shocked, amazed, and very proud of what we're going to be offering students in that new Joplin High School when we open it up in August. So, very proud of the work that she's done, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to reiterate, and I know I said it, I think, I believe it was Monday, at East, but I know within hours of the May 11, uh, May 2011 tornado, Dr. Besendorfer was on the phone and just made numerous, numerous...I witnessed it, and just making calls to make sure every child in Joplin had a place to go to school. And, I mean, literally, within hours, she was on the phone negotiating deals and making sure that our kids had places to go to school. And I just, that struck me, and I just want to say I appreciate it and thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a fabulous journey, and I've learned so much and made great friends, and my heart will always be at Joplin.
Thank you very much. Back to the superintendent's report, please.
All right, well, item A is School Board Recognition Week, which I think we've done a good job volunteering. I don't know about you all, but that song is going to be playing in my head for several days now, but that's a great song. One of the things, I texted Kim Vanna, said, "We need to use that as a thank you video." So, they're going to be modifying that. We'll put that on Jet 14 as well. I think that's really cute and very appropriate, so thank you for putting that together. But school board service, as you know, is, when it comes to volunteer service, there's no service like school board service. There is no pay for this job, but you've put in countless hours and certainly appreciate everything that you guys have done and the support you've given to our staff and students as we've trudged forward over the last several years, and are making great progress, and the fruits of your labor are seen in these new buildings, and we're making great progress with construction, which is a nice segue into a construction update, if you don't mind. Real excited this evening, have some great reports, and looking forward to you all hearing this evening. We'll start with Universal, if you don't mind, and give us an update on where things are construction-wise. So, Archie's here this evening, give us a full update.
How are you, Archie?
Very good. Thank you all. Glad to be here. I'll try not to talk too long, but as always, if you've got any questions or if I don't cover anything that you've got questions about, please, please let me know. Starting from the shorter reports, moving towards the long, Irving Elementary and Soaring Heights and East Middle School, we're all still working, you know, closely with the contractors on punchless items and making good progress on each of those. So, most of those were working after hours and, you know, and when available, and working around staff, and everyone's been great and working with the contractors, and we expect to see those punchless getting wrapped up in pretty short order. Most of, most of the items, for example, at Irving that we may be waiting on is, you know, if we've got materials that we're still waiting on showing up, but most of the items that they could get completed inside are all completed at this point, unless we're just waiting on materials. And we're also waiting on the weather to break a little bit for some of the exterior up in, in pretty short order. Most of, most of the items, for example, at Irving that we may be waiting on is, uh, you know, if, if we've got materials that we're still waiting on showing up, but most of the items that they could get completed inside are all completed at this point, unless we're just waiting on materials. Um, and, and we're also waiting on the weather to break a little bit for some of the exterior items when it's a little bit nicer to take care of those. But, uh, we'll keep on top of those and make sure they all get completed to everyone's satisfaction and, uh, close those projects out promptly. Uh, at the high school, uh, starting with, uh, the areas that, uh, I guess have the most to complete at this point, uh, Performing Arts Center, uh, we've, uh, completed, or I guess I should say, Branco has completed, uh, the last of their footings. Uh, we talked last time about, uh, finishing all of the micro piles. They've got all the caps and all the grade beams and footings completed at the Performing Arts Center now. Uh, they are currently working on the orchestra pit. If you haven't been by there, you can see they got the walls formed up for that, uh, inside and they've poured maybe about 60 to 70% of those walls. And, uh, probably most excitedly, uh, the precast guys have got it, got started setting some of their panels. Uh, it's been a little cold for, uh, for the equipment and, and for the guys, probably about the last week, so, uh, with the break in the weather, we think that we'll start to see those start to fly really quickly here over the next week or two. Uh, gym areas, HME, our steel contractor, has completed the, uh, steel structure at, at this point and now they're working on more of the detail work. Uh, they have about 80% of the, uh, second floor metal deck down. Uh, they've actually poured the lid for the FEMA shelter and they've completed the metal deck, or the, uh, the metal roofing, uh, for, sorry, the metal deck for the roofing over the auxiliary gym, so, um, we're getting close to being able to turn that over to the roofer so we can start getting part portions of the gym, uh, facility under roof. Uh, Franklin Tech Center, Walker Masonry's completed about 80% of their load bearing masonry, uh, on that portion of the facility. Uh, HME has came in and set, uh, the, uh, hollow core precast plank. Uh, if you recall from the design, uh, we have to set those in the building before we can actually put the roof on it, so they've done those for Area J and they're just getting ready to set those in Area H here within the next couple of days. They're supposed to show up. Cafeteria wing, uh, Branco's completed their concrete walls and HME has moved in and set the structural steel for the FEMA room and, uh, the deck for that should show up. I believe it's supposed to show up on Thursday so they can get that ready for a pour early, early next week. Uh, they also have the rest of the steel there for Area G, so they'll start setting the east side of that and you'll start to see, uh, that take shape in very short order. Uh, the arts wing, uh, where we've got, I guess, probably the second to most work completed, uh, PCI, our drywall contractor, has substantially completed all their interior stud framing at this point for both buildings B and C. Uh, Omni and P1 have completed about half of their in-wall rough-in for the mechanical and electric, or the plumbing and the electrical work. Uh, PCI has hung probably about 20% to 25% of the actual sheet rock in those two buildings and has actually started taping work in the lower level of Area C. Uh, Commercial Glass has completed about 20% of the windows in that building and has a number of more frames ready to install and are working their way towards those facilities. Uh, last but not least, the science, Sciences Wing, which is Areas D and E, which are the furthest along. Uh, our drywall contractor, PCI, has about 45% of the tape and finish work completed. Uh, Commercial Glass has completed about 90% of the exterior windows. Uh, the painters showed up yesterday and has started, uh, putting paint in some of the head end rooms for the, uh, technology, uh, equipment that's gonna move in so that we can get P1 and, uh, the low voltage guys in right behind them to start putting racks in place and, uh, pulling wire for all the low voltage systems. Over, uh, the course of the next month, uh, what, what can you expect? Uh, February, we'll see the continuum finishes in, uh, the, all of the, uh, all the classrooms, uh, I guess B through C. In particular, the painting guys will keep moving. We'll see the ceiling grid guys get in and start work, as well as actually starting to set some light fixtures in the ceiling grid and, uh, getting ready hopefully for casework, uh, towards the end of, uh, next month. Uh, the building structures for, uh, the Franklin Tech area, the cafeteria space in the gym, uh, should all be nearing completion by the end of the month. And as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're close to ready for the roof for the auxiliary gym, but we'll kinda cycle them through the auxiliary gym, then over to Area J to start getting the roof on those, uh, on Franklin Tech and move on up towards the rest of the building. And, uh, as long as the weather permits, you know, by mid, uh, mid-March, we should be at a point where we've got roof started on all of those, uh, all of those buildings. So we're getting, getting excited about that. And I think that's all I had for this evening. Oh, um, we did, uh, we did bid out, uh, I guess, the balance of the, of the high school projects, the, uh, the asphalt, the tennis courts, the, uh, athletic turf, um, probably forgetting the AV equipment. And, shh, what am I forgetting?
Landscaping, wasn't it?
Uh, landscaping, so, uh, each of those, uh, you know, should be in front of you guys on the, uh, on the agenda for this evening, so, uh, we're anxious to get those guys under contract and get them scheduled to get out and start wrapping up the outside of the facility.
Questions for Archie?
Did I miss Area G? Did you comment on that?
Uh, Area, Area G, um, the, uh, it's the cafeteria, uh, area. We've got the, uh, the concrete walls are finished in that area now. Uh, Walker Masonry has, uh, probably about half of their masonry walls up. The steel contractor has set the, uh, steel for the FEMA.
Uh huh.
Safe room and has deck showing up, uh, later this week so that we can get the concrete lid poured on that. And they have the rest of the steel there. It's, uh, it's mobilized in the space and they're getting ready to start erecting the east side of that, that building, I guess.
Well, what we all wanna know is we drive by, is it gonna be done?
Absolutely, sir.
Any other questions for Archie?
It's gonna be done, but what month? We know it's going to be done.
No, we, 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 we will make sure that, uh, that we're ready for school in August of 2014.
That's awesome.
And do you have the cost of the other three buildings?
The cost of the other three buildings?
What did it cost to build, or even Soaring Heights and East?
Uh, combined cost for, uh, Soaring Heights, just construction cost or like architectural fees and stuff also, or just?
You want hard costs, don't you?
The hard, hard building cost for, uh, for East and for Soaring Heights, I believe, was right at about 44 million. And on Irving, I think the actual construction cost was about 17, 17 million and some change. I don't, I don't have the exact numbers.
That's right. I'll bet approximate, might.
Okay.
Close enough. Thanks.
Any other questions for Archie? Thanks, Archie.
No, thanks.
We appreciate it.
All right, I think next we have, uh, Knapp Holt's here, gonna talk a little bit about safe room projects. We've got a number of those going on right now.
That's awesome.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Is this the one I said, or this?
Either one. Whatever one you'd like.
Again, Jeff Gaddis with Knapp Holt's Construction, the project manager, and I've got a, a lot more small ones to go over, so, so I may not get in as much detail, but, but of course, uh, stop me, ask me any questions that you got, I'll try to get those answered. Uh, I'll kinda go in sequence of the, the most complete to what we're calling Phase Three, which is West Central and Columbia. Uh, Cecil Floyd is, is, uh, finishes-wise is the closest that we've got. I think last month I told you we would be doing interior finishes and we are. We've got, uh, probably 85% of the interior painting completed. Uh, starting next week, we'll have basketball goals, ceramic tile will be going in the bathrooms.
Cool.
Fixtures will be hanging up. Uh, we're, we're, we're moving right along, uh, the flooring in the gym will start in the next two weeks, so we're getting very close on that one. Uh, if the weather breaks a little bit, we'll finish up the brick on the outside and we would have a lot more finish to the drive-bys, okay? Jung Field, uh, all of the interior overhead mechanical rough-in is, is completed, well, it will be completed at, at the end of this week. Uh, interior finishes, of course, will be starting in there, uh, right on track. Um, the, uh, exterior improvements under the gray and stands, if you drive by, you'll see that, that we've got, all that old asphalt is torn up. We've got some, some, uh, utility upgrades that we're, we're gonna be completing next week and then all the new concrete under there will go in, in the next two weeks or so. And then we'll start, we're, we're actually breaking up all of the, the gray and stand columns and that will start probably in the next two weeks. So where you see the old painted columns and stuff, we're gonna give that a, a fresh look under there. So, uh, ideally, we'll have all of that under the gray and stand work completed in time for track season, so, so we're out of the way for, for traffic and things there. And then, and then of course, uh, finishing up that project, the project as a whole in early April for Jung Field. Stapleton, um, that's probably the most finished looking on the outside. We do have to, to come in, we've gotta put the roof on the little connector piece and we've got some storefront to put in that, that connector piece, but as far as the FEMA structure, it's, it's essentially 100% completed on the outside. They again have, uh, finishes starting, uh, Monday, actually, as far as paint goes and things like that inside the facility. And just like the last one I talked about, we're gonna be seeing tile and then, uh, gym equipment, bleachers, so on and so forth in the next weeks ahead. Again, that project is slated to finish complete in early April. Uh, McKinley and East Moreland, they're almost tracking, probably a, a week apart. Um, long story, or short story, they're, they're slated to finish at the end of April now for us. Uh, we've got, uh, interior masonry going up for, for kind of the back house stuff, which is where the restrooms and things are. Uh, we've still gotta build the connecting link, which is the masonry, and that's about three weeks worth of masonry work and then the finishes will just start sliding right into place on that. So they're both, both in very good shape to finish, uh, I guess, well, in the, in the April, like I stated. Jefferson, which is the start of what we call our Phase Two, we bid those later. Uh, drawings came out later, we bid those later. Uh, that building pad is to be completed, uh, early next week and, and foundations will start on that immediately next week. Uh, that will be the first place that we receive the precast concrete structures, uh, Core Slab Structures out of, uh, Kansas City area is delivering that on February 19th is our hard delivery date, so we're working to make sure we're ready for that. Uh, Royal Heights is actually a, a little bit ahead of, of, of track, a little bit easier dirtwork job. We, uh, we have the footings already started there, they're tying rebar, you, they're gonna start, uh, they'll actually start digging footings either Friday or Monday, but they're tying up all their rebar and stuff to make that go, go faster. That's about a eight to 10-day process to get those exterior, what we call the FEMA footings in. Uh, precast delivers on that on about 11, or nine days after Jefferson, so at the end of February, we'll be seeing precast start to be erected there. Kelsey Norman, we've got, uh, a few other, I won't get into the details, but a few other, um, site work items that we have to get completed before the building pad can start. Uh, we've got a major utility drainage system that goes right under the footprint of the new, uh, safe room that we're gonna have to reroute before we can do any earthwork. And then after that, because of some very bad or very poor soils, we're putting in what's called a, a geo pier or an ag here, where a specialty company comes in, instead of dr- doing like a micro pile out of concrete or something, you, you dig your holes and you, it just starts compacting with aggregate rock to, to make a suitable foundation area. That starts, uh, Wednesday of next week for the ag tiers and then the building pad will start the week of the 14th, or actually, I guess that's the 17th. Those, uh, that precast delivers on March 11th. Uh, again, 10 or 11 days after, after Royal Heights and then Dunaway will follow right after that. We're kinda waiting to, to get some, some school equipment out of the way and, and we're gonna get, we're, we're not in any real big rush to start that job just because of how far out we are on precast. Okay? Uh, West Central and Columbia, what we call our Phase Three, uh, we're waiting, uh, we had a OAC meeting today with, uh, with, uh, Mike and, and PLJBD and we're being told that we're gonna get construction documents, uh, on February 7th, which is a week from Friday. So we're expecting to get construction documents then and we'll have about a four-week bid process and then we're gonna be starting the whole process over again. Okay? That covers all 11 of those FEMA shelters. Uh, kinda went fast. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
It looks great. Can't wait to see them all done.
I can't either.
Including those prices, are they, the eagle, eagle-ized inside or is that the district?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
Are they eagle-ized inside?
Eagle-dupped.
Eagle-dupped inside, or is that ours?
Oh, yeah. They're gonna be eagle-dupped.
Okay. I didn't know if that was part of ours or theirs.
Maybe in the next month or so, maybe we can schedule a tour or something, whatever.
Okay, thanks.
So you all, so we'll have some.
Well, it's gonna be great, 'cause seeing the two new, Soaring Heights and Irving and seeing our PE instructors actually have a place for their students has been fantastic.
That's not the cafeteria?
Yes, not the cafeteria.
After lunch.
The gymatorium? You didn't like the gymatorium.
Yeah, and the thing too, and you guys know this, you know, those, those separate, uh, gymnasiums from the cafeteria critically important from a scheduling standpoint and when we can deliver instruction at the elementary level. So it really helps out, especially the big buildings, but, you know, Teresa's building even, uh, just being able to schedule, not having to schedule around PE and, and lunch.
And programs.
You can pick, when you pick, when you wanna choose to pick, teach reading, you can have a lot more flex, flexibility when you do that. It's a big deal.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.